First order of business is going to be meeting minutes July 17th. Does anybody have any corrections, additions, deletions? Seeing none, can I have a motion to approve?
To approve.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Uh, next thing is 262 Groton Road. Um, I need to have Jeff and Dave sit on this because the other two full-time members of the board weren't here. They didn't do their homework.
Get attention.
Gilby is charged.
I missed it. What did I do?
Not you. I told my board members in March, so.
You said Gilby is charged.
Go ahead.
Um, Mr. Chairman, members of board, good evening. Douglas DeShane representing the applicant, um, with me, Matt Ottawa from, uh, Lantech. Uh, you recall at the last hearing, uh, we went through the, the proposal and in fact, we discussed, uh, the conditions, some conditions in terms of cleaning the place up, limiting the parking and, you know, getting things in a good operating situation. Um, we had a couple of homework items to do. One, we wanted to make sure that we were asked to make sure that the fences, existing fences were on the plan they are. Secondly, um, we redesigned the floor plan so that there's a storage area shown on the, on the backside of the, or on the, yeah, the backside of the, um, bay, uh, and we've eliminated, uh, garage door on the bay, um, and put a people door. So the plans now reflect, there'd be a bay door on the side where the existing bay stores are, or on the other side, it's just going to be a people door, uh, heading in. In fact, if we could, um, Joe, if you don't mind going to that, um, well, there's the, there's the, the, the plan with the garage bay, uh, on this, that side. But as you can see now, uh, we've put a people door at the end there and we've more, made it more clear that this proposed storage area at the end of that service bay. You recall, um, part of this is to get the area cleaned up. That proposed storage area will allow us to move any materials that we're currently storing outside, uh, into the storage area. Um, and I think those were the three main changes to the, uh, plan, although after reading the draft decision, I saw that it called for a formalized fence around the dumpster. Uh, so we actually, Matt, actually designed an enclosure, um, and, uh, and, and here it is. So we're, we're proposing a fence and gate. That's what you'll see from Route 40 if you look all the way through the site to the back. Uh, there'll be the door for the, for the enclosure, for the dumpster and the, um, uh,
Metals.
The metals. So we have two, two dumpsters. One will be for metals and one is, uh, you know, garbage disposal. But they'll both be in an fully enclosed, um, fenced area. And if you want to just jump back to the site plan, um, you can show, there it is. So you can see right there where it says dumpster and metal dumpster, that's where that enclosure will be built, um, with the front doors right along that edge of parking, uh, so that we can access it straight in, straight out without anything. Um, we've defined the 15 parking spaces that we're asking for, uh, on this plan. Uh, and you can see that it does not involve double stacking and it also has cleared out the aisle along the bay doors so that we won't have any interference moving vehicles in and out. Um, and we really think, um, you know, this, again, this is going to allow us to clean the site up. My client's already, uh, put into action a plan to get the, the, there's a old rental truck back there. There's a couple of metal containers back there. Um, that's all coming out. It's all going to be cleaned out and, uh, there'll be nothing stored back there, um, moving forward. So, um, that really are the changes we made. Um, I did file a special permit. We talked about the technicality of having an extension of the non-conform use. I filed that. I've provided you a criteria for that. And I guess the last thing, we, we, we reviewed the draft decision. Uh, my client had no issues, um, and is confident he can meet all of those requirements in terms of limiting parking and, and everything we've agreed to. The only question I have is one of the conditions said no unregistered cars allowed. Um, and it is typical for a station like this to have a client or two who, you know, have bought a car. In fact, he's got one there now. It's an old, uh, not old, it's a new Ford Shelby, uh, you know, exotic car. But the owner hasn't registered yet because it needs significant amount of work. So we'd ask the board to consider allowing us just up to two unregistered vehicles. However, they will have to be parked in one of our 15 spots, so.
For how long? 30 days?
No, it, it, to be honest, Scott, I mean, a project like that Shelby, it's a few months that it'll be there. Um, so I mean, I don't want to tell you we'll get them all out in 30 days. The truth is, you know, on the odd, on, on the occasion that you have a client like that who's investing in a car or restoring a car, whatever, you know, it could be there for a few months. I know that, that Ford has been there a while.
Insured though, it's insured. It's got to be insured.
I assume that
It's 50 bucks for registration.
It's a 60, you know, a hundred fifty thousand.
It's insured anyway.
Yeah.
I think we need to put some kind of a shot clock on it.
Okay. Whatever your board thinks is reasonable.
So you tell me what you think is reasonable.
One month is fine.
Oh?
One month is fine.
Why not?
Yeah, I'm positive.
Just not, I'm
There's a couple weeks to get a car out of the lot with the junkyard, tow it to the scrapyard and stuff, so I'm just
Do you want to come up to the microphone and give us your name, please? Just so that we're
My name is Faisal Mur. I'm the manager at the station. So one month is reasonable because sometimes, like, I called today to get the U-Haul out. I said, oh, I can take it before like two or three weeks to get it out of the, you know, yard, so.
What he's actually talking about is, um, there's currently a condition proposed that you can't leave an unregistered car on the site for, you know, all cars have to be registered.
Okay.
What I've asked them to do is allow you to have up to two
Yeah.
unregistered cars on the site.
Yeah.
But the board is suggesting what, what's a reasonable time for that? You know, like, like for instance, the, a month or two months?
Well, the longer the better. One month is reasonable, two months is better because sometimes, like I said, people come in to fix a car and they cannot afford to fix it. Then they take the plates off and then I have to deal with like junk in it or calling a junkyard to take it away. So it takes two weeks, three weeks. That's not a
So I think
I like to take them off same day, but
60 days. And I think, I think what your council was more talking about is some of these cars are not everyday cars, like the Shelby he was talking about.
Mm-hmm.
You know, if you have to do multiple things to it, you know, think about that as opposed to a regular car off the street.
Yeah, yeah, of course.
60 days?
Yeah, 60 days is doable.
Okay. Board, all right with that? David?
So if you're finished with that, I have a question. Are 15 spaces really going to support what you want to do? Because, yes, I think I just wrote by there the other day, you still have cars double stacked and unless there's a immaculate conception or something, I'm
Not today, not today. I cleaned up today, excuse me.
Oh, today.
If you drive by today, you won't see double stack anymore. You can ask Bob, the neighbor. He was there every, so yeah, we, I'm doing my homework.
But, so you're good with 15?
Yes, I'm fine with 15.
He's not going to allow double stacking. We're not going to, I mean, he's, he's willing to accept the condition.
I live in the area. I will witness your good intentions.
Well, having the third bay is to help me eliminate all the leftover cars in the parking lot because with bay and a half, it's hard for me to kind of fix all the cars during the day.
But some would argue that if you increase your capacity, you increase the cars. It, it's not the inverse.
But we can't do that, David, because we now have a restriction.
Well, I understand your, uh, statement. I'm just questioning, can you fulfill it?
My clients agreed to those conditions.
Okay. So that, Joe, I have a question. Who enforces that? You sound stable.
No.
Ultimately zoning enforcement goes through, through our office, through the building commissioner. So if there was an issue, um, zoning enforcement would follow through that process.
Okay. So one of the things that, uh, was mentioned to us was the fact that there was an oil tank buried out back. Is that true? It's been removed?
There, there was none there. The oil tank that's there and the one that we investigated is a exterior oil, waste oil tank that was used to feed the heating system. That's going to be moved indoors.
Okay.
So that tank that's out there now to be removed in order to build this.
And back, back in the day, there wasn't a below grade tank.
Not that we're aware of. Matt, you?
No, and, and one of the things we did, obviously we checked with the, the people, the occupant, um, but the Board of Health did have, uh, a notice of permanent solution from an environmental firm with a sketch of all the, the current tanks on site.
Okay.
That was available at the Board of Health office. I could certainly give a copy to Joe.
Okay.
And Doug, if you do move that inside, you do need a permit from the fire department for that.
Sure. Can you note that down?
Mm-hmm. Okay. Uh, does anybody have any questions, concerns, opinions?
Opinions, looks good.
So Joe, now that they have this sexy new fence that's going to go around these dumpsters, do we have to add a variance because it's in the right of way or not in the right of way?
Uh, no, it won't be in, it won't be in the right of way, so.
Not in the right of way, but I mean, close to the lot line?
Yeah. Um, so the fence won't be, uh, a structure, uh, in terms of needing any kind of variance, so you'll be fine with it, um, being within the setback area.
Okay.
It'll be six feet or less.
It's six feet, yeah. If it was taller than eight feet, then you'd have an issue.
Okay. All right. Uh, is there anybody else in the audience that would like to make a comment either in for or against? Seeing none, um, when we're prepared to close the public hearing.
So move.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
All right, so Joe, could you read us your, um, list of?
So it sounds like the, at least the one change I've heard that you'd like to the decision letter would be to allow, have an allowance of up to two unregistered vehicles for up to 60 days.
A longer than, yep.
And then, in the decision, wasn't there a, uh?
There's also kind of a, a discussion point, if you will, about, um, I guess, cars that are registered, would you allow any number of vehicles like that to be stored overnight?
Wasn't there like two Xs where we had to put a number in?
Correct.
Yeah. So is that number 15?
15, I think.
Yes.
Yeah, okay, he said yes.
On number two.
So you're willing to allow up to 15 vehicles to be stored overnight?
Yep. Right, well, you got to put it in there. All right, so we are looking for, do you want a separate vote, Joe?
Um, we, we did one decision letter, so you could do both together.
Okay, so we're looking for a variance for Appendix C, Westford zoning by law to construct in addition for a commercial building resulting in a side yet setback of 11.5 where 15 feet is required, along with a special permit, uh, for a pre-existing non-conforming use. And I have a motion.
Motion to approve. Second.
Uh, so Jeff?
Yes.
Jim?
Yes.
Dave?
Yes.
And, yep?
Yes.
And I will also vote in the affirmative.
Hi, guys. We appreciate your time and effort and we'll look forward to cleaning the place up by us so that Dave can check it out.
All right.
Good luck.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Hey, Joe, do they, uh, do you need a coffee?
I do.
Dave, let's head back to Joe, please.
Thank you, Dave.
Are we taking this next, the full, in order or are we taking it in order?
We're taking, we're taking this. So, uh, next item on the agenda will be Joe, and you're going to tell us a little bit about the new rules in town.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So in your packet, we received an update from KP Law, Town Council, um, providing at least what we have at this point from the provision in the Affordable Homes Act pertaining to accessory dwelling units. Um, so that bill, along with a number of other things housing related, um, did a couple of things relative to accessory dwelling units. Uh, one, it created, I guess, kind of a uniform definition for an accessory dwelling unit that would be standard, uh, throughout the state. Um, and that's part of section, I guess, seven, uh, in there. Um, along with the new definition, it has a couple provisions, some of which will, uh, take effect, take effect immediately, um, and some which will take effect on February 2nd, 2025. Um, so in the immediate, uh, it has in there that towns and cities cannot, uh, unduly regulate accessory dwelling units. Um, I don't think necessarily anybody would argue that this board does at this point. You have a special permit process. You have a history of having approved accessory dwelling units in the past. Uh, so I don't think anybody, you know, necessarily would make that argument. Um, you've, you've had, you've had a process and you have approved them in the past. Um, there is in, coming up in February, um, where depending on the size of the accessory dwelling unit, so it's going to be 50% of the gross floor area or 900 square feet, whichever is less, uh, that could potentially be allowed as of right on a property. Just one accessory dwelling unit, if you try to go for a multiple, uh, if you tried to do larger than what your allowance, uh, would be, um, then, you know, the towns would have the ability to have some sort of other process that would likely come in front of this board. Um, but if it fits within that box and say any kind of setbacks or anything that you have, um, it would be an as-of-right use. And so that's, that's what came out of the Affordable Homes Act. Um, I guess in a nutshell, um, there were a couple other items, um, for your reading pleasure, uh, in there from KP, uh, but those were kind of the big things relative to accessory dwelling units. So we just wanted to get that information to you, uh, since you do have a couple accessory dwelling unit petitions on here. Uh, I will note, um, probably as you saw in your packet, uh, 122 Main Street did look to withdraw theirs as they felt like they weren't in a rush, um, and, uh, felt like they could wait until that February 2nd timeframe to pursue an accessory dwelling unit.
Okay, thanks, Joe. Does anybody in the board have any questions from Joe?
So it's effective immediately?
So what's in effect immediately is saying that towns and cities cannot unduly regulate, whatever you want to interpret that to be. Um, so here in town, we do have a process where people can get an accessory dwelling unit. We have this special permit process that comes from the board and it's not like you have a history of, you know, denying every single application that comes in front of you. You have a history of having approved them in the past, so, um, I don't think necessarily anybody would have a strong argument trying to say that we're unduly regulating accessory dwelling units to this point.
So I do, do have a question.
Sure.
Uh, the point in the memo, it says, it, coming down the road is it'll remove the ability of cities and towns to impose owner occupancy requirements.
Thank you, yes.
ADUs.
Yep, so that is another key point. Thank you, uh, David, for, uh, reminding me. Um, so our current bylaw says that the owner has to occupy the dwelling at least six months out of the year. That could be the principal unit, that could be the accessory unit, um, but we will no longer be able to have that provision in our zoning bylaw as of February 2nd. Um, there will be, nobody can have that kind of standard in their bylaw at that time.
So if, so if, under today's rules, we could enforce owner occupancy?
Up until February 2nd.
And then what happened? They could come back again and appeal it?
Um, well, then they would be able to, to rent out both units.
Okay, so, so effectively owner occupancy is history?
As of February 2nd, 2025.
For anything approved after February?
Well, it wasn't
Or is it, uh, anything approved up until February?
That's a good question. I would have to check.
Yeah, pass all, you're an existing ADU, a person
It would be a provision we couldn't enforce.
Yeah. And that'd be, oh, that'd be there right then, right? They wouldn't have to come back to this board.
Yeah, it would just be a provision we couldn't enforce. So I guess to answer your question, we, um, it wouldn't matter if it was approved now or somebody came in February 3rd with an application.
So existing units that we have approved in the past are now not grandfathered, they're just applicable to the new law as of February 2nd?
Well, any, any other conditions of approval that you may have had, if you, uh, had certain storage limit, you know, restrictions or, or anything like that, um, those would still be applicable.
It would be applicable to
But the owner occupancy piece, we couldn't enforce that. We couldn't require the owner to occupy at least six months out of the year. Um, they would be allowed to rent out either unit.
So the new legislation wouldn't be comprehensive to anything that we've done in the past, but would, could they come back for changes or, I guess that doesn't matter at this point, but.
Yeah, I, it would probably be a case-by-case basis of what, what was involved.
Any possible conditions, yeah?
So somebody who wanted something beyond the 900 square feet, they would have to come.
We could still have, you know, regulations that said you would have to come in front of this board. Um, yep, if, and see if you would be willing to consider that.
Well, I know, excuse me, if nothing else, maybe we should ask KP to give us just an opinion as to our existing ADU stock.
You could
Because it feels like if this law goes into effect in February, we're going to cross that bridge at some time.
Oh, yeah. It could be overnight, 100 square feet, or it could even be, you know, something less because of that whole math provision of 50% of the gross floor area.
The question is, if somebody has an existing ADU with spouses, with, with the owner occupancy thing, February comes along and they wind up putting it up for sale, saying, here we have a two, could you say a two-house lot or a
duplex?
Whatever the hell you want to call it. A house in an ADU and we want to market it that way, is that, is that okay?
Sure, we could get something from KP or any other questions.
I mean, I wouldn't spend a lot of money on it, but it would be on, it would be interesting to know what, uh
Yeah, it was like if you had a detached garage, you potentially could make that an ADU?
Sure.
If it fit, it's got to fit in the box.
Yeah, that's to fit within the provision.
Right, right.
Yeah.
But it, it essentially
And you could do that under your current bylaw.
Essentially, well, essentially it's, it's, when this goes into effect, you could have, if you will, a two-house lot.
Right.
A lot of two-house lots.
A lot of them, right, a lot of two-house lots, right. Because they don't have to be attached, right?
Well, attached or not attached.
Right. Which we have not run into a lot of that in the past, right?
No, not for standing, yeah.
Anybody in the audience have any questions regarding this issue? Come up to the microphone, give us your name, please.
Oh, sorry.
That's okay.
I'm Cheryl Porter. I live at 19 North Hill Road. Um, just to clarify, the, the law that you're mentioning in February, anything approved prior to that would not fall under that law or would in fact fall under that law? I was trying to discern all the different input.
Uh, I guess, so we have a bylaw currently and, um, anybody looking to, I guess, have an accessory dwelling unit prior to February 2nd would still have to get a special permit from this board.
Okay.
If they wanted to wait till February 3rd, uh, if they could fit within the parameters under the Affordable Homes Act, um, then it would be a by right process and they would just go for a building permit.
And also just to clarify, the purpose of this law in February is to satisfy a low-income housing requirement for the town or what is, what is the purpose of it?
This was a provision in the state's Affordable Homes Act, um, so what the, one of the state's goals, I guess, uh, would be to generate more housing production. Um, there's been a longstanding issue of housing production, uh, in Massachusetts, um, and this was one of their, uh, ways to try to generate more housing with the state, uh, keep the, in, I guess, keep folks that want to be in Massachusetts to have more housing options to be able to do so.
Thank you.
So just so that we're straight on this, if we approve something and make it before February, if we make it so it has to be owner occupied for six months like we always do, when February rolls around, that condition does not hold up or it does hold up?
Does not.
I'm, again, I'm not an attorney, but I would say that it would not hold up.
Okay.
How about the attorney in the audience? Would they have a comment?
To the extent that it violates law, it's gone. So anything that's in violation of the new state regulation is gone. So if you put in a restriction that says it has to be owner occupied and then the restriction, uh, even if you put it as a special permit condition tonight, it would be removed as of the date, this is
February 3rd.
February 2nd. Gone. They don't need to come back to this board for any action.
Right. So all existing ones are Right. So short-term rentals?
So it won't, you can still prohibit, uh, use of short-term rentals, um, even after February 2nd.
Yeah. Yeah, that, yeah, that was specified.
Yeah, that was, yeah, so this isn't
There's no Airbnb type
Correct, right.
But that's a whole, that's a whole nother can of worms.
Oh, yeah, wait till you get down that road. Yes, sir. Come up to the microphone.
Andrew Kohler, 524 Westford Road in Lowell. Uh, quick question, the short-term rentals, I'm just curious, what defines a short-term rental? What is the length on that?
Uh, so here in town, I believe we define it as less than 27 days.
It was originally started, voted in to protect against Airbnbs in neighborhoods. There were a few incidences in town and they wanted to nip it in the bud. Okay. Is that where you're all set?
I'm all set.
There are bad news?
There, yeah, so. Maybe looking at the zoning bylaw amendment for annual town meeting in March.
And you know, the sad thing is, we just spent a lot of time and effort creating our, our new bylaw, which we worked hard on, staff worked hard on, for what? Okay, so that brings us up to the next item. 24 North Hill Road, ADU. Come up to the microphone, give us your names. Tell us what you want to do.
All right, so, good evening, I'm the member of the zoning board of appeal and thank you for your time. My name is Chen and I'm here today to present, uh, my request for a special permit to construct a detached, uh, accessory dwelling unit at 24 North Hill Road in Westford. So first, let me, ah, give you some background about my property. So five, six, five, six years ago, I got married and I have kids. So we're looking for properties in a good education system. So we find Westford. We find this property at 24 North Hill Road in Westford. At the time, um, this house was in extremely poor condition and neighbor has told us the story that the previous owner may have some financial hardship, so they end up renting out the homes to tenants, which end up being a squatters in the house. So, um, the property has since then fallen into severe disrepair. Uh, when I first brought the property and I had to invest hundreds of thousands of dollars, um, into a, cut renovations, as transforming it into the house it is today. And at the time, many of my families and friends, they tell me, they look at the house, they tell me, you, you must be crazy to, to, to buy this and it, it took guts to buy, to take on such challenge. So I, I checked my book and until today, I have invested roughly $200,000 to restore and improve the property, uh, which we are now proudly to, to call home. And I want to give you some, uh, background about my parents. They are in their early 60s and they are so-called empty nesters now. And they live in a large colonial-style home where most of the home are now unused. So with the property tax, insurance and maintenance costs rising during the last couple of years, um, they are looking to downsize and, and reduce their energy consumptions and carbon footprint. So we've been searching on the market and unfortunately, there's really nothing on the market that which would meet our needs. It's either small vacation rentals or large, five families, big houses. And that doesn't really meet our needs. So I've looked online, did some And that doesn't really meet our needs. So I've looked online, did some research and I come across this ADU idea from, and I checked under the Westford zoning bylaw that was allotted. And I figured, well, that would be a perfect solution for our families. And so by doing this ADU, we can help ease the burden of our families and allowing them to downsize while still enjoying a private, independent living space. It will allow us to provide them with the care and to support them as they ages. So that's the background. And then next, I want to talk about the design and the sustainability. So this project is designed to be a single-level, accessible, senior-friendly living space. It will be built to the passive house standard. We're aiming for a net zero home. So the house will be fully electric. So we're gonna be using sustainable building material like European-style triple-pane tilt-in windows, doors, highly-efficiency heat pump system, mini-split system that produce heat and cool the house. And we're gonna have energy recovery ventilation system in the home, which will provide, constantly provide fresh air and at the same time maintain humidity and temperature. So this setup is estimated to reduce the energy consumption and the greenhouse gas emission from roughly twenty-five thousand pound CO2 emission to close to zero per year. So this project reflect my dedication to reduce the carbon footprint and support the town's sustainability twenty-fifty goals. Then I want to talk about the neighborhood characters and I understand that maintaining the character of the neighborhood is, is a key concern. And our project has been thoughtfully designed to blend seamlessly with the surrounding homes. And I worked with my architect, Andrew, on quite a few iterations of the design and we end up with the current one. If you look at the shape of it, a telescope back from the street and making it appear smaller and less obtrusive. And additionally, our house is on the dead-end street and the two sides of this ADU is actually in a wooded area. So, I mean, if the privacy is a concern, we can also implement new design language or putting up additional landscaping, like trees or fences, so that privacy is not a concern. And we've been tried our best to make sure this ADU design preserved the overall aesthetic of the neighborhood and to maintain privacy for both us and our neighbors. And the other question I got a lot is, so what happened if, if the senior person no longer live in this home? And this is actually a great question and I've considered the question very carefully. And I wanted to say my parents, they're in their early sixties. Based on the life expectancy of the people here in Massachusetts, they're roughly seventy-nine to eighty, eighty, eighty years. So if nothing's gonna happen, they're gonna be live here for the next twenty years. And so when the inevitable time comes, our hope is to, like, our kids, if they stay in Massachusetts after they graduate, it could be a good starter home for them. And I think it's a great option, like, to start their independent life. So, and if that's not the case, they decide to move elsewhere, I believe there are many, many families out there just like have the same situation like ours, particularly with those people with aging parents that might need family help. And this ADU would be a perfect multi-generational home setup. And I can see the demand for this type of home will be increasing and making a very valuable long-term solution for the overall community. And to me personally, I think it's really not a good idea to have somebody that I don't know living in my backyard. And I, I think that's not my intention to do the ADU, to have it rented out to someone else. And I think I'll be very careful when, when I have to sell the house and I'd be very careful to choose whoever the family that's buying this whole setup, they will have the same situation and I, I want to leave a place where I call home to be a better place for the next homeowner and for the neighbors. So to sum everything up, with the additional, the project, hundreds of thousands of dollars being invested, I believe this project will be beneficial to our family and to the overall community. And I would also like to highlight that this project meets the current zoning requirement and align with the town's goal for creating affordable senior housing and achieve the sustainability goals. And I'm here respectfully request your support in granting the special permit so we can move forward with this very unique and important project. I thank you for your time. Very happy to answer any questions.
Sure, thank you. I guess that, let's start off with the board of health and the septic system.
Sure.
There's a lot of emails going back and forth and tell me how this is ended.
Well, so at the very beginning, I was instructed by the health department to do a title file report, which I did. At the time, I, I believe the health department said something like, because the bedroom count, I have to reduce one of the bedroom in my primary house so that the septic system is adequate for the additional unit. But when I revisit the case and went to the town, I believe there's another lady told me I have to update my current septic system to a two-chamber system, which will, will fit the additional. I fully aware of it and I'm prepared to, to do the upgrade if that's necessary.
Okay, I just want to make sure that you understand that and like I said, there were so many emails going back and forth, I couldn't keep track of the dates and the times.
So, do you mind?
Go ahead.
What, a two-chamber system, was that just means there's two?
It's in a septic tank. It's probably a twenty-five hundred gallon septic tank.
There'd be two of those, then?
A fifteen hundred gallon on one side with a compartment wall and then a thousand gallon. That's usually what they're referring to with a two-compartment, when you're getting into the ADUs or duplex.
So will it comply for five?
Flowing the same leach field, then?
Yes, yes.
So that will, that will comply for the five-bedroom requirement?
The five-bedroom requirement is for the leach field and the septic tank technically, but sounds like the leach field's adequate if you reduces one bedroom.
Well, that's my question, how do you reduce a bedroom?
By removing a wall.
Yeah, and put the deed restriction in there, too.
It'd have to be required to be, yeah, okay.
So while we're on the bedroom count, in the new proposed ADU, the front room says bedroom slash study. You can't say that.
It's a formality. At the end of the day, from legal definition of a bedroom in the building code is a minimum square footage, that you have an egress window and enough light and vent. You don't need a closet like real estate agents will tell you to. So again, if it's treated like a bedroom, you can call it that. If you're more comfortable with me just calling it a study, we can strike out the word bedroom.
I think we're gonna have to because we're already under the gun with four bedrooms. Now this is a potential fifth.
Not a problem.
Okay, okay. Does anybody have any other questions? Okay, do you, do you know how close your neighbor is rand? Number twenty-two?
Yes, I, I believe that reflects on the drawings.
Not on mine, mine just show the buffer zone. The neighbor's ran over here. It showed a setback or a drainage easement on your property line, but the surveyor didn't illustrate where their house was.
Okay.
We don't know that information.
It shows nineteen point five.
For perspective, there's currently an accessory structure in the same location as the proposed ADU.
That little shed?
Yeah.
Yeah.
And that was the commissioner's recommendation that we keep the proposed building matching the same general footprint or be fully consumed in that footprint.
Okay, so the shed's coming down?
Shed's gone.
Okay.
Mr. Chair, it looks like, at least just based on GIS, which is, you know, reasonable. Looks like it's saying twenty-two is, you know, say seventy-three, seventy-four feet away from its own, from the property line between twenty-four and twenty-two. So the ADU would be plus whatever.
Plus nineteen.
Yeah, plus, yeah. Just under a hundred.
Just under a hundred, okay. The board have anything else?
How are you going, I guess, deal with, I'm assuming they have a car, your parents?
Yes, so including their cars, the total gonna be three.
Three, and so all the parking will be in the existing driveway, then?
Um, there's a little extension.
Well, we can.
Yeah, see this?
All right, oh, okay, all right.
We, we can make this bigger if required, but.
My, my, I guess, if they're getting to their, the new ADU, they're gonna walk from the driveway to there, then, right?
Okay, have you thought that through with the snowstorms? Because you're looking, I kind of scaled it out. You're looking at sixty feet. Doesn't sound like a lot, but.
In the original sketch, we had the proposed ADU matching the front line of the existing dwelling. Again, the commissioner's recommendation was keep it back behind the building. It minimizes visibility from the street. Appeal more to the neighbors with concerns about the neighborhood character. And at the same time, it did share a footprint, at least in part, with that current shed. The trade-off was, yeah, you're gonna, the parents have a little bit more of a hike. He's just gonna have to deal with maintenance when it comes to snow removal.
Just remember, you're gonna live with a we-don't.
Yeah, but if we can, can we still change that or, I mean, we'd prefer to move it forward a little bit.
Typically, when you're at the board, you're not changing the location.
Right, right. More comments? Is there anybody in the audience that would like to speak to this measure? Come up and give, come up to the microphone, tell us who you are.
Hi, good evening. Chris Bobo, twenty-three North Hill Road. We live across the street. And I just wanted to, my wife and I have no problem with the concept of what is proposed. But we will, you know, but this is a, a separate dwelling, ADU. And we were wondering if there was any consideration given to constructing, adding on to the existing residence as opposed to being a separate, separate structure. I think it's a bucolic neighborhood. Most of the homes were constructed in the sixties. It's different architectural designs. It's a very beautiful neighborhood. And I don't know for sure, but I think, I don't know if there's any, any lots in the neighborhood that have an additional structure on them, but I'm not really sure, but I don't think that they do. So this might be the first in the, in the particular neighborhood. So again, we were wondering if there was any way to reconsider and have the structure be built to add it to the house as opposed to a separate, separate structure.
Hey, would you like to answer that?
Thank you. There was a conversation regarding the possibility right at the very beginning of the project of, should it be considered as an addition onto the existing dwelling? The way that conversation kind of played out was you'd end up with less windows on it. You're building a brand-new structure, which is easier to comply with the building code. In this case, he wanted to go well above code and approach passive house standards. And I make it very clear to say the words "approach" because he was not seeking certification with passive house, but we were gonna be doing quote-unquote "super insulation," the high-energy systems, all of those things. So yes, we did consider it. We ultimately went back right to Westford zoning ordinance. Bylaw, section three point three point four specifically said that the ADU may be located in the principal structure or in a detached accessory structure. That's what we were going on, saying the bylaw said you could do detached. A lot of townships do not have that written in it. So that's why we said it was okay to pursue it this way.
As of February twenty-fifth, they're all gonna have it.
Exactly.
So this would be the same address, though, right?
Technically, if it's an ADU, the building code requires you to have an, an address on the property. It could be twenty-four A potentially or A and B.
The only reason I ask is.
But it should be a, a consistent address.
The only reason I ask is, is how are you going to provide for the utilities to the, to the unit?
It's fully electric.
Exactly, so how are you getting electricity?
From the power company, is what he's talking about, and water.
To that unit, are you coming from your panel and your house?
I believe that is a question to, to an engineer.
Yeah, we are planning for solar panels on the roof that should offset quite a bit of the load, if not all of it, from the electrical side of things. As for the water, there is a drinking well on site. We'd have to talk to the engineer about how you connect or sit in on to that.
So you're talking with the solar panels, are you gonna be incorporating a solar wall?
Oh, my main, my main building already have a solar wall, but I'm not sure if they'd be able to connect it to each other.
I'm telling you, they won't.
Well, but they have those net meters that running backwards when they are getting solar.
No, I'm talking about the battery wall.
A battery wall, I have for my existing drilling already.
You can't use the same one.
I'm not, not the same, yeah.
And as far as your address, you're gonna have to figure something out for nine-one-one in case your parents call for an ambulance.
It gets coordinated with the building department at the very end, doesn't it? When a brand-new house goes up, that the town assigns what the number is?
Between the police and the fire.
But this is nothing new. I mean, we have a lot of
Right.
situations where there are multiple residents on a lot, if you will. And it's A and B or
Right.
front and back or.
Right.
All right, thank you.
Mm-hmm. Is there anybody else in the audience would like to speak for or against? Pull it up, tell us your name.
I'm Cheryl Porter again, at nineteen North Hill Road. And we, my husband Brian and I do completely support Chen's family being able to live, you know, with him. We understand the value of that for sure. But the concerns that we have primarily that we did send in, send in ahead of time, just basically, I guess, the, the remaining ones we'd like to answer is, how will this affect our property values? Be it five years from now, ten years from now, twenty years from now, when a house is shown and you look and you're driving around a neighborhood, which our neighborhood has a very distinct visual, lots of space between neighbors, how does it look to people when they see this other section, oh, is that a rental property there? Who's, who's living there? How, do you all know the impact of that from other, you know?
We've asked questions like this a million times and there was no answer.
Yeah.
Call every realtor in town and they'll give you a different story.
Yeah, exactly, exactly. Yeah, that's what I thought, okay. And again, this, this building would meet the low-cost housing requirements for the town or no? That's not, because it's not February third yet, okay.
Even with February third, because they made, eliminated the owner occupancy compliance or requirements, this isn't about affordable housing anymore. Every one of those new ADUs that's gonna be proposed is basically market rate.
Okay, okay. And on behalf of my friend, the name of her, Norma Zoggers is the other abutter. She's on my phone right now and is unable. She's out of state right now and is unable to attend. She had concerns, I was just looking at her letter, which I know she sent to you, on the water issue because the, she was concerned about the well and the septic system being strained and, and mentioned the board of health, but as she mentioned, underground water and basement flooding has been a problem for homes along the stretch of road for many years. And as the immediate neighbor of this property, I've had to undertake significant remediation efforts to combat basement flooding. She's concerned how the ADU's additional water usage may impact her, her own property negatively. And do we know that or is that, again, an unknown?
What number is she?
She's, she's right next door. She's the other abutter to the right. You can see her in the bottom of the.
She's uphill.
Yes, uphill, uphill, right next door.
I learned a long time ago, water doesn't flow uphill.
Yeah, well, it's gradual, but it's interesting and our end of the neighborhood, where some people have trouble with it and some people don't. And, yeah, just in general, she's had issue before and just doesn't want another impact.
This proposed dwelling, is this gonna be on a slab?
Okay.
It's not gonna have a basement?
No.
Yeah, yeah.
And I also have the same issue when I first moved in the house. I have to invest twenty grand into it. Perimeter drain, battery backup, end up going with a test of battery backup, making sure the pump will works. It's constantly pumping. We have too, too much water, not a problem, not without water.
So let me ask you a question. Can you see the shed that exists now from your house?
When I look out my front, yes, I believe I can. If it's not on Jared's side, Jared, I look out. When I look out my front, yes, I believe I can, if it's not on Jared's side, Jared, I look out, I see that shed is, their shed, right? Yeah, I'm diagonal, I'm diagonal, out, out my front driveway.
Perhaps you have, you have a hundred and nine feet from the street to the deck, um, there could be some shrubbery in there or something to screen from the view from the street.
If I was that, we could put it, it's not a problem.
Yeah, like I mentioned, if privacy is the concern, we can put in landscape, screen.
I think you could screen perhaps a good portion of that accessory dwelling from the street and from the neighbors across the street.
Of course.
By-
Orbidies, living fence, not, not a big deal.
Yeah.
Yeah, I would go where I was going with that.
Thank you.
Okay. Anyone else in the audience? I guess not. So just so that everybody in the audience is clear, we did get all your emails, we did hear all your concerns. We're trying to get this conditioned as best as we can, so that everybody's happy. Because once again, if they wait until February, we have no chance of making any conditions. Because they can fit it in the box, as it's called. So, just so everybody understands that.
When would you be, if this was approved, when would you be looking to break ground on this project?
Well, I would say by the end of the year. Ideally.
Design basically stopped where it's at right now, because we wanted to see how it proceeds through the boards. And all of that started before the Affordable Homes Act was passed and every town was sent into a tizzy of what do you do now?
We all sat here? Okay, so, um, one of the orders of conditions is gonna be screening from the neighbors, street side. Do we have a dimension that we wanna make the screening, how long, how tall? It's eighty-four feet from the house to the lot line, the existing house.
Do you wanna close the public hearing?
Or do you wanna get the conditions in?
Quite, that's a question, that doesn't matter to me. I did think it should be quiet screening.
If you feel like you have enough information, um, then you could close the hearing, if you wanna wait till after discussing conditions and maybe getting some additional information, um, then you could wait.
I think the screen should be, not a fence, living fence, but three sides should be technically screened, from the two neighbors and the street. In some form.
So, which side, Scott?
So alongside where twenty-two is?
Yep.
Do some type of screening.
Yep.
Along the front, so from the street it's screened, and then something on the other property line just to limit the visibility. It's not gonna be a hundred percent screen, but just something to break it up. Where they go from an open area, the neighbors don't have to look at the structure.
Okay.
It's not shown on the survey, is, back of that side is heavily wooded to begin with.
Which backside?
The whole back of this property, it's just not shown on-
There's no neighbor over there. Talking about the neighbor on twenty-two, and the neighbor twenty-six. So if the neighbor's, twenty-six is in their backyard, a couple of trees along there somewhere, just to-
Look at the topography, it's a lot higher, like, like if you have a GIS mapping, maybe you'll just see that.
I did look at that more, I think.
So Scott, you're talking about Rand's lot line and Zaga's lot line in the street.
Again, it doesn't have to be side by side by side, but I think if you break it up with a tree or something, every eight, ten, fifteen feet, that will grow.
I would agree with that.
Cause I think the ADU is in front of the hillside for the se- for the leach field.
Right.
From the, from the twenty-six. Carton lines are great, but there's no elevations on them, oh, there we go.
Two twen- two forty up on that corner.
Yeah, you can two hundred down.
And it's gonna be down over here.
It's two hundred, yeah.
Two twenty.
Yep.
So it's twenty feet from the back.
Go scroll up a little bit? Nope, the other way. I just want to see where the house was.
Not that much of a difference, I mean, I don't think there's a huge difference from twenty-six, cause that, uh-
No, there's a difference.
Accessory dwellings way on the other side of their house, but I think it's more concerned from the street, across the street from North Hill. I think, I think if you totally screen the vision from across the street, you get eighty-four feet, you could put seventy-five feet there, or sixty feet there, and you'd be fine, I think that'd be helpful.
Sixty would probably bring you over to the driveway.
Yeah, close enough to it, yeah. I mean, he's gonna have to have a, perhaps a walk somewhere to put a walk in it and go from the driveway to the, to the dwelling.
If you'd like, Mr. Chair, you could always perhaps have the landscape plan, uh, brought back to the board administratively for your review.
You can do that.
Mm-hmm.
Prior to occupancy permit or something.
Good suggestion.
So do you need numbers now, or are you gonna wait for them to submit a plan?
They could, if you would like that option, we could word it such that, um, we just have them submit a plan and then you can work with the applicant to make any kind of buffers as, as long or as tall as necessary.
So we'll give you some suggestions, the front, street side, sixty feet, a six-foot orbidies. And then from there, we'll leave it up to you. The other condition, Joe, is he's gonna remove, uh, bedroom from the plan where it says bedroom study. And I know it can happen, but the lot's not subdivisible for two different structures. Cause twenty years from now, we're not here, someone's gonna say, who made that decision?
For what it's worth, we did look at the Westford zoning bylaw where it had the provisions for multiple d- buildings on a lot, which obviously doesn't apply to this zone. We did comply with what would have been those setbacks as required in other parts of the bylaw. We did try to respect them as much as we could.
Anybody else have any con- conditions, concerns? Okay, so we're back to the regular five members, we have a motion to close the public hearing.
Some move, second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Alright, so. What are we looking at, yeah?
Eight hundred ninety-three.
You got it right in front of you?
Eight hundred ninety-three, yep.
Okay, so, twenty-four North Hill Road, we are looking for a special permit to construct an ADU of eight hundred and ninety-three square feet as a detached accessory dwelling. We got a motion.
Motion to approve, second.
Yes.
Jimmy?
Yes.
Ian?
Yes.
Jay?
Yes.
And I will also vote in the affirmative. Staff has fourteen days to write the decision, there's a twenty-one day appeal period. Good luck, you're a test case.
Thank you, gentlemen, thank you for your time.
Okay, the next item on the agenda was one twenty-two Main Street, that has been withdrawn. And now we are gonna move on to one twenty-three Oak Hill Road. You see the applicant is here, representation is here.
How's the luck?
Good evening, Mr. Chair, uh, members of the board, for the record, Attorney Melissa Robbins from Farrell and Robbins. Uh, here with me tonight, you've already seen him, this evening, Matt Waterman from Land Tech. Um, the applicants are also with me this evening, Lisa and Jim Payne. And also the proposed manager, Melinda Spalding is also here this evening. Uh, we're here tonight for variance to allow for the boarding of animals on the property, of le- of less than five acres in an industrial zone. Uh, the variance will allow for an animal daycare of up to eighty animals, so we're proposing eighty animals here. There will be absolutely no overnight boarding, so I just wanna make it clear that this is just for daytime animal daycare only. Uh, the property contains two point five seven acres and the existing building, as you could tell by looking at it, was constructed in the very early eighties. Um, it's a pre-existing, non-conforming, major commercial project, that's largely due to its size, it's seventeen thousand, six hundred and sixteen square feet, it's sneaky large, it really is quite big back there. Uh, it was previously used as a business and a factory, which focused on fabrication and laser services. Uh, that business has unfortunately moved to Devens, which leaves this building vacant. Um, even though the use is pre-existing, non-conforming, the building commissioner has made the determination that I need a use variance. So I'm not here tonight for a special permit, I'm here tonight for a variance for the use, which would be the, uh, dog daycare on less than five acres. Uh, the Pains, as you may know, are well-established business owners in the town of Westford, they're very excited to start a new business. Uh, this type of service is in high demand in town, I don't know who uses these services in town, but there is waiting lists for the two that I know of. Melinda Spalding, who's with us tonight, uh, is actually going to be the manager of the proposed business. She has worked locally for the Rough House for the last four years and has been the manager there for a year and a half, so she has extensive experience in this type of use and in this area. Joe, we move to the site plan. The use will actually be contained only on a small portion of this building, small compared to the full size of the building. Six thousand, two hundred and fifty square feet, as you can see right there, it's co- it says Unit A, daycare. That's the portion of the building we'll be using, I'll let Matt go through a little bit of the inside architecture in a minute. Um, outside, you can see we're proposing to convert some of the paved area into proposed outside play area, and the area's huge, it's five thousand square feet, that's a huge outdoor play area, uh, it's almost the size of the indoor area. Um, you can see that we're proposing a fence, it's a large fence, it's a tall fence, it's eight feet in height. So that's my second variance, it's before this board this evening, is to allow for a structure that's eight feet in height uh, within the side yard setback, uh, front yard, excuse me, front to Oak Hill Road. This will obviously keep the dogs better contained and will also help mitigate some of the sound going to the neighbors, but as you know, uh, one of the neighbors is a contractor yard, who also has a variance for an eight-foot fence, and the other one is a gas station, so I don't think they'll be deeply affected by the dog noise that's there. Um, when putting together this proposal, I actually tried not to recreate the wheel, this board has actually recently seen a doggy daycare, which was the Rough House expansion, which was, um, in two thousand twenty-two, I think only Mr. McMillan is missing from that decision in two thousand and twenty-two. Um, I went back and looked at that decision, and this applicant can actually agree to every single condition that this board put in place. Uh, the only change would be that we would be asking to be open one hour earlier, uh, to accommodate commuters. Uh, the Rough House actually does overnight boarding of thirty dogs, so if you have an early leave, you can leave your dog overnight, we're not proposing that at all. So if we're asking for one hour, I'll run through the conditions quickly. Um, the outdoor enclosure shall be located as shown on the plans of record, we can agree to that. There shall be staff on premises whenever, any dogs are on premises, obviously, we can agree to that. The walking of dogs shall occur only on property, obviously, we can agree to that, and we have a very large outdoor area to easily accommodate that. The facility is limited to a maximum of a hundred and ten dogs, again, I'm reading from the Rough House decision, ours will only be eighty. Uh, there should be a minimum of one staff person with experience in dog handling, we already have that. The establishment shall maintain a ratio of one staff person to twenty dogs, we will absolutely have that. The hours of operation shall be seven AM to six-thirty PM, Monday through Friday, again, we're asking to open at six AM, instead of seven AM. And eight AM to six PM Saturday and Sunday, uh, again, we're asking to open at seven AM. Uh, waste shall be disposed of a minimum of one time a week, we're actually gonna beat that, our waste disposal is daily. And I attached a copy of the contract, just for any of you that are curious about dog waste disposal, removal services on a daily basis, the contract's there for your reading pleasure. Uh, but it just makes it cleaner and easier and make sure that we have no offensive odors out there, out on site, so we will be having daily waste removal. Uh, the fence surrounding the outdoor enclosure shall be of such a material to act as a visual buffer for the abutters and minimize barking. Again, uh, we're actually proposing a larger fence, they have more abutters, uh, closer to them at the Rough House. We actually have a little bit more area and we abut to the rear to, um, the resource areas, so there's no abutters back there. But we're hoping this eight-foot vinyl fence will actually help, um, reduce some sound and obviously keep the dogs contained. And the last condition you have in here for the Rough House is the applicant shall obtain a certificate of inspection every calendar year from the building department, I love giving the building department more work, so again, we would agree to the same condition of approval. Those are all the conditions of approval you have for the Rough House, this proposal can easily agree with the, every single one of those. Um, and again, we're gonna be a less intense use, uh, dogs per square foot than the Rough House and have more outside and inside area. I won't labor you with going through all the variance criteria, I know you have it in your packet, but I just wanna say that this one's easily met. This is an industrial site on a dead-end street that borders other commercial uses, such as a contractor yard, which is nearly impossible to permit in the town of Westford, but it's right next door, also with a use variance, also with an eight-foot fence. Uh, we went around and tried to knock on every door to our abutters, you can see, um, uh, many of them couldn't attend tonight, but I did have them sign an acknowledgement. Um, and because I can't help myself, I brought it this evening, even though it's late for the packet. And I put a little color-coded p- plan in the back, just so you can see which abutters had signed off on them. Um, obviously, it's our closest abutters, the gas sta- they spoke to the members of the gas station and the other abutter that couldn't be here this evening, and nobody raised any objections whatsoever. I do not think this will have a substantial detriment to town, I actually think it'll serve a service need for the town. I think we're putting all protection in place to make sure that we're not a nuisance to the community or the abutting neighborhood. And with that, I will not speak anymore, I'll turn over to Matt to quickly go through the indoor architecture, just so you can understand the crate-free nature of the business, just like the Rough House, and the outside landscaping that we're proposing.
Thank you, and, uh, Joe, if you could leave it right on this slide for now, and then we'll go to the architectials, but kinda, the first task was kinda dissecting the existing building. As Melissa said, it sits behind Packard Machine, right at the intersection of Oak Hill Road, um, kinda hides back there, it was the building that we're gonna occupy, Unit A, was built in eighty-three, and then Unit B was actually built as an addition in eighty-nine. The, the, the Unit A has kind of a mezz- not a mezzanine, but a, a smaller second floor, it's like a lunchroom, or, and it will be for us. Um, but Unit B has two full floors, um, of equal size. The, and Joe, if you could go to the architectials, the proposed, the existing are very helpful. On the prov- right here on the proposed first floor, um, Unit A is on, on the right-hand side, Unit B is on the left-hand side. The proposed use for the daycare, in this case, on plan right is where the outdoor space is for the, the outdoor kennels. Um, the indoor, what we've labeled as play area, is, gets subdivided up into three kennel areas, small dogs, medium dogs, and large dogs. Um, and then towards the front, where the parking lot is, um, towards the, the further in Oak Hill Road or further north, there's, there's just a simple entryway, there's grooming, uh, storage, and, and obviously closet and bathrooms, relatively straightforward. About sixty-five percent of the, the, the space is occupied by the kennel in the back, and about thirty-five percent roughly is the office storage entryway. Um, and Joe, if you go back to the site plan, if you don't mind. I'm sure most of you are familiar, have, have gone down Oak Hill Road Extension, Oak Hill Road, um, at some point in time. They currently have two curb cuts with kind of a turnaround, um, the one closest to Route forty, um, gets removed. Um, and there's nine, currently nine parking spaces and a loading dock, um, in this area, that would be converted, as Melissa said, to the outdoor play area. Um, they do have a specialized kennel turf that gets installed, and that's up on the right-hand side. It's specific to kennels, um, it's washable. And we've been working with Board of Health to kinda iron out the details of, of the maintenance of the, of the, the turf. And so we've, we've gotten some chemical cut sheets, biodegradable, um, cleaning products that, that are safe to, for the environment, um, that get applied and sanitize the surface. Parking, there's currently forty parking spaces, they're not really clearly deline- They're not really clearly deline— defined, but just drawing them out with the current zoning, there's the nine spaces that get removed and then thirty-one spaces remain in the rear of the property. Obviously, if you look at the footprint of the building, that's about half of the building, the footprint size, not the square footage, the gross floor area. But we would keep about twenty spaces for Unit B and then that would leave eleven spaces for the doggy daycare. I think there's expected about five employees and then the rest are just drop-offs and pickups. And we feel like there's more than enough space. There's kind of a—the zone that we didn't designate as parking, closest to Oak Hill Road, obviously that could be a loading zone overflow. That was the access aisle to the parking area that we're removing. Screening, and I know Melissa talked about this quickly, focused on the outdoor play area where there's no other significant changes to the site plan with abreviated along Oak Hill Road and along our closest neighbor to the south, Packard Machinery with abreviated and then an eight-foot vinyl fence. You happy to answer any questions on any of the topics?
I don't have much more to say, but I will say quickly that this will not be the last board we have to go to. We're an existing building. We're changing uses, so we will be going to the planning board. So if you're starting to think of some of these design questions you might want to ask us, no, we're going to the planning board for at least site plan review. I know Henry and his determin— Commissioner Fontaine in his determination letter had stated that he thought we may need a couple other approvals. I don't think those are all going to be necessary since some of them are pre-existing, non-conforming, but we'll get there when we get there. If this board approves it, then we'll go on to the planning board and we'll also deal with the Board of Health issues. I just want to speak quickly about operations. I don't know how many of you use these services, but parking is not necessary. They're a quick drop-off and pickup. They are one to two minutes. You actually just bring the dog in, they identify the dog and the dog goes in and that's done. It's a one-minute handoff and you're back in the car and you're gone. That'll be done between six thirty and ten— excuse me, six to ten AM. That's the only drop-off time. If you're a new client, that's when you would come after the general drop-off time between the hours, I think of ten and three. And then general pickup times are after three o'clock until closing time. And then there's a little time after closing time, which is cleaning time, which there are going to be no dogs on premises since we're not boarding. I think that has answered all of the information that I've had, but again, we're happy to answer any questions you might have.
So can you give me the hours of operations again?
Yes.
So let me go back to the conditions. I knew it was six AM to—
I got it there. So the hours— here we are, the Rough House. So it'd be six AM to six thirty PM, Monday through Friday.
Yep.
And then seven AM to six PM, Saturday and Sunday, with no overnight boarding.
In the daycare area, are there going to be cages in there?
No.
Not cages, but the boxes you put the dog in?
This is a kennel-free operation, just like the Rough House. So they put the dogs by sizes, small, medium, and large, and that's the way that they're placed outside as well. And they're obviously mixed socialization areas for those dogs that don't need to be held by sizes, but that's generally how they're held. It's not your typical, you go into the vet office, you look in the back and there's a wall of animals in there and they get taken out for walks and then put back in the cage. That's not this type of facility. Really, it's a play area, open to all dogs, and then they also have an outdoor area. These are well-behaved dogs, not for my dogs. They will not be frequenting here.
What other questions for the board?
At six o'clock, will the dogs be allowed outside or are they going to stay inside?
Six PM?
Six AM.
Oh, six AM. They all come inside?
For how long?
Oh, you mean for—
At what point will the dogs be released to the outdoor area? And my only concern is Sweetwood?
Oh, sure.
Road?
Yeah.
At what time would they be released outside?
Seven works. We could keep them in till—
Yeah.
—seven AM.
All right. That's my concern is the one neighborhood that would be impacted by this.
Sure.
They don't want to hear dogs at six AM parking.
Yeah.
And then, why did we push the fence all the way to ten feet from Oak Hill Road?
That was to keep the size.
Kind of goes out?
Yeah, it's to keep the size fifty by a hundred. And we—if you look at the front of the property—
Go back one slide, Joe. It shows the existing—
Yeah, it's right there, so—
We kind of mimic the paved area today.
Yeah, it already exists. We're taking out those nine parking spaces and we're turning that into the outdoor play area. And just so you know, that the front where the— front's not the proper side. The side where it says existing building fifteen-six, that already has an existing variance, if you're wondering why it's so close, and we're going to respect that with the fence. And then we're going to run along the pavement line that exists today. So we're going to become no closer. So we need no relief except for the fence and the setback. A fence only as well. If the board does approve this, the condition could be this is for fence only and for no future structures.
So as people come in and leave, you're going on snow removal with the existing parking or—
There'll be snow removal for the existing— all the parking, all the snow would have to be plowed or removed from the site, yes.
You have sufficient space for that to—
Yes. Yep.
Allow them to come in and out?
Yes.
Plow?
Yes.
There's actually a significant gravel area at the end of that parking aisle.
Yeah.
Okay, yep. It's got to be forty by forty, if not bigger. They had some equipment, I think—I don't know if it was—
Right.
—liquid or whatever they were using for their laser machinery, but you can see the pad and the fencing. They've removed the tanks, but there used to be equipment back there and I think that was loading area for the large vehicles to reload the tanks.
It's not paved, but it is disturbed, packed dirt back there.
Are there any preliminary plans for the use in Unit B?
No. No, but that would be anything out there that's not a factory or general business will be coming back, would have to come to the planning board for a change of use, just like we will have to. So any parking limitations or any issues like that would have to go before the planning board. It's not as if we could put a restaurant in there at this point. All the parking would be gone and—
I'm just concerned about storage ending up in there.
Right. No, if we expanded into the— this variance would be specifically for that area. If we wanted to expand into that area, we would have to come back to this board for a modification.
Not Jimmy or Lisa's storage, though.
Oh, storage. Yeah. Well, there is warehousing in there.
Your storage.
There's warehousing, open space offices in there now, but right now, there's no proposal to use that space.
Rest of the board, no? Anybody in the— go ahead.
In the conditions, you're asking for eleven spaces?
No.
No, we were just saying for breakdown of spaces, we have plenty. Even if the other use uses twenty, let's say based on square footage, we would only need the eleven. The planning board will be looking at parking as well, but we think that that's more than enough parking spaces to accommodate this. And if not, we have plenty of area to expand the parking lot should the planning board determine that's not enough parking. But we think it's more than enough parking. It certainly exceeds the parking that's over at the other doggy daycare businesses.
You're interested in eighty people coming in and out?
Yep. Yeah, but they don't come in at the same time. It's all staggered and it's quick. So even if you—you know, even if you were coming in, you'd have to wait a second for somebody to back out. Everybody's coming and going. Nobody is staying because new clients will come in after drop-off and pickup time. There'd be no enrollment where somebody was parking.
And Scott, the parking was based on when they did the addition in nineteen ninety, the site plan approvals with planning board.
Right.
So all the parking counts are based on that.
Right.
I'm just looking forward for when B, if you want to get rented out.
Right.
Right.
Now what are we going to do?
With parking?
With parking. Two tenants are going to have to fight over forty, thirty-one spaces, depending upon what the use is.
Correct.
Well, I think there's room to expand in that area that says edge of pavement, correct?
Yes.
Because that's a big area.
It's huge and it's disturbed. That's why I'm saying if the planning— if we have other sites that have constraints, the site does not. So if the planning board says they need us to add more spaces, we would just pave an additional area.
Or greenbank them.
Yeah. Or greenbank them, yeah.
You think you can find someone to pave it?
Maybe we could find somebody to pave it.
Find a paver?
Yeah.
We're going to stop them.
Yes, but we have no issue with having to expand any of that area back there if need be, but we just really don't think it's necessary. And even if the planning board said bank ten spaces back there and build them if you need them, we could do that.
Anybody in the audience like to speak to this? Come up and give us your name, please, at the microphone?
My name is Lakshman Gargipati and at Leven Russell's Way, just behind the lot. So our concern is the dog barking and it will be constant, which is—we are kind of right behind the lot pretty much. So how do we design it to stop? Leven Russell's Way.
Russell's Way.
Russell's Way.
Can you tell us, Matt, how far Russell's Way is from this location?
I assume it's one of the houses with the common drive.
Yes.
When you first come into—
Yes.
Russell's Way, Greystone, there's the commercial building that where our office used to be. And then there's kind of a gap in some houses that are right on the road, but then there's three houses that have a common driveway that kind of wrap in a little further than the rest of the houses in Greystone that are kind of consistent. Distance-wise, I was thinking it's got to be over three or five hundred feet. I don't know if Joe has the GIS. See how good my estimate is.
From right here?
Yeah.
Right.
Yeah, from right there. Three hundred.
Five hundred.
Oh, five hundred, sorry. I was looking at the degrees.
Mr. Chair, just—I can address that quickly.
Sure.
So—and that was part of this board's concern, with the original approval of the Rough House and the expansion, but that's why you have always employees on site and you have to keep that ratio of one employee to twenty dogs to make sure that they're not creating a nuisance. I'll tell you, when the Rough House came in here in two thousand twenty-two, they hadn't had one noise complaint in the fourteen years that they had been in operation since two thousand and six, not one. So that shows you how successful the dog-to-human ratio is. And additionally, there will be the additional fence for anything outside and there's always an attendant outside with all of the dogs. So that's how they keep the noise down at these facilities.
Can you see the building from your house?
I mean, on winter time, yes. Not summertime, yeah, because a lot of leaves. So you're planning to put some eight-foot walls, right, which will cover this sound? Can we raise that to twelve feet so that the sound doesn't come towards us?
I don't think they make a twelve-foot fence.
No.
Mr. Chair, if I may. So what we did was we put an eight-foot fence and then we actually put trees, tall—trees that will grow thin and tall on the outside of that fence to help mitigate that even further. And really, we're out of space at that point because then we hit Oak Hill Road and then the gas station and the contractor yard. So those buffers are between—
Towards the— towards the— the, what do you call, this side, right, where the trees are, right? That's where the noise comes to us, right? So if you can protect that part, right, like noise protection.
So you're talking about here?
I think up around the corner, maybe, yeah. No, where the ten-foot tick mark is, maybe?
The gate.
Yeah.
Right there?
Right.
We could extend further.
That could be behind, yeah.
We could extend the abrevieties along that island towards the curb cut, yes.
Mr. Chair, we'd have no objection to an extension there.
Probably three additional abreviated.
Yep.
And so most of the time, the dogs will be outside or—
Can I respond?
Yes, you may.
No, so no, they're not just outside. They come in and out in a rotation. Sometimes they have care inside. The building inside is actually quite large and there's three kennel areas that will be inside and then sometimes they'll rotate outside for outside play, but they're always monitored and always watched.
Right. So for average, ten hours, right, six to six, not twelve hours. So what should I expect the number of hours? Because if you're inside, right, maybe we might not hear the sound of the dog. My only concern is dog barking, that's it.
Mm-hmm.
So most of the time, they are inside the building, right? Hopefully, you know, we won't hear. But if they are fifty percent of the time outside, then we—absolutely, there won't be any peace for us.
They're walking to you outside.
Right. We lose all our peace. I mean, absolutely. I mean, the dogs, right, barking, we can hear. They're not scared about that. We can hear. So I'm trying to see how do we mitigate that.
Do you hear machinery noise like—
Oh, yeah. That's not—
From the—
That's more closer, actually. It's right behind us. That'd be accepted. I mean, it doesn't happen all the time. This will be happening all the time, looks like.
Well, they just said it wouldn't be.
I mean, that's the design, but in reality, right, dogs are always barking.
Okay, thank you. Anybody else in the audience?
Can I ask one question too?
Sure.
They don't— that was just a crazy question. They don't walk the dogs off the premise, do they?
No, and there's a condition—even the condition of the Rough House is that they could not walk the dogs off the premises and I would expect that you would put a condition of that in this position.
I could see a person wanting an option to have their dog walked and stuff.
No.
Well, they're going to walk them around this five thousand square feet.
No, there's no off-site walk. Yes, everything is contained on site.
So the noise issue did come up with the Rough House.
That's correct. Well, and that's part of it, is monitoring.
Right.
The noise. This isn't unabated, your dogs in the backyard barking all day.
Right.
That's not allowed. And even a new business in town, regardless of what this board approved, is not allowed to rise to a level of a nuisance. We don't think this would be a nuisance. That's why we put all the protocol in place to make sure that that will not take place. And I guess the proof is in the pudding because if you look at the Rough House, who has the same setup and the same management style that this has and where our manager works at, they've never had a noise complaint. So I think that that goes for—it speaks for itself without any more need to speak about it.
Well, I actually went down to the Rough House, I don't know, it was the first time or the second time, maybe both times, and sat there for a while just to hear. It was nothing. Because not all the dogs were outside at the same time.
Right.
But I went down, I think it was in the summertime I was down there, good weather anyway. You know, and some of the dogs, they run in, they run out. They run in, they run out. And then I rode down the road behind Rough House, which the houses are a lot closer than five hundred feet. And there was no negligible noise there. So I think—and as the guy from the Rough House said, you know, we train our dogs not to be barking at each other.
So if you were amendable to keeping the dogs inside for that first hour, Monday through Friday, from six to seven, would you be willing to do it on Saturday and Sunday[1628.26]
to pride from six to seven, would you be willing to do it on Saturday and Sunday, so if they come in at seven, you'd keep them in till eight?
Yes.
Especially on a Sunday?
Mm-hmm. No objection.
Anything else? I think, as usual, Melissa has everything pretty well covered, answered all our questions. You really think you got to wind up with eighty dogs?
Yes. Yes. There's wait lists at all of these places for well more than eighty dogs. You know, it's our hope that we're back here in a year and be moving into the other side and be asking for more dogs, but at this point, our business plan is for eighty.
Okay. All right, is the board's prepared to close the public hearing?
Don't move.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay. So we are looking for a use variance to allow a dog daycare, and a variance to allow for an eight-foot fence with a front yard setback of ten feet, where thirty-five is required.
A fence only.
Fence only, correcto. Joe, do you need two separate votes, or can we combine them to one?
We combine them if you'd like, Mr. Chair.
So can I have that motion?
Don't move.
Scott?
Yes.
Jimmy?
Yes.
Ian?
Yes.
James? And I will also vote in the affirmative. I don't think I need to tie to the deal, but...
No, this is very much my opinion, board.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So, yes, that was one of the things agreed to, was they're going to extend those shrubs. You know, they might even, you might even stagger them a little bit so that they fill in a little faster.
Mm-hmm.
They'll do a good job.
And I think there is some existing vegetation, so we'll try and work with that as well. We won't cut down trees to put in small trees.
Okay.
We will keep the same number of trees, we may space them differently.
Okay, great. Great, great, great.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, I guess the last order of business is, what is it, Joe? General business, what do you got?
Joe, we provided you with the, at least the draft of the meeting motions for special town meeting coming up October twenty-first, just for your review, see if you wanted to discuss any items, get any additional information, take any positions on any articles. There's likely to be a handful that may come off, as you can see, a number of them were placeholders for, you know, something potential to get on there. A number of those will be taken off, so the agenda will shrink, if you will, or the warrant, I should say. But didn't know if there was, you know, anything in particular about the zoning bylaw amendments that you wanted us to cover, and/or you wanted to take a position or not. Totally your, totally your call.
Can you, can you give me the firearms information, you know, what that's all about? It's a hot topic.
Sure. So briefly, this is a different version of a bylaw intending to define and regulate firearm businesses, so how it's different from in the past. A number of buffers away from the business have been removed, if you will, so the ones that remain are a thousand-foot buffer to schools, so, and have five-hundred-foot buffer between firearm businesses. The zoning districts where this is proposed by a special permit is industrial highway and commercial highway, so the only school you're really necessarily seeing in that area is National Valley Tech. The planning board this time, they had looked at, potentially looking at, trying to see if IA had made sense. Ultimately, they decided to stick with commercial highway and industrial highway at this time. Firing ranges have been taken out of the definition of a firearm business, so wouldn't necessarily see anything that would construe a sports club to be included in this definition. There's also no limit on the number of special permits that may be issued. In the past, there was, past version, it was limited on number four and only so many of different, I guess, services, whether it was gunsmithing or retail, that those could apply to, so now there is no limit on the number of special permits that could be issued for a firearm business. Those are some of the major changes from the last time. Special permit is required if we want to have the buffer in between businesses, as was requested by the chief of police. So, and to have the police department involved in the security plan. Those are the two big things the chief requested, and to do that, to have those kind of conditions, we need a special permit, as opposed to, say, site plan review.
Okay. I think the next one's kind of interesting, where you have contracted yards and breweries.
Yes.
Is there correlation there? Let's go all the way.
So looking to define and regulate some additional uses, not just firearm businesses, but things that we've gotten inquiries about in the past couple of years, since I've been here, anyway. Breweries, micro, microbreweries and brewers, whatever you want to call them, distillery, winery. Brew pubs, which are fairly similar, and similar to a restaurant, I guess, just the natures of the business could be more manufacturing-driven versus more, I guess, patrons coming in and dining-driven. So we were distinguishing them that way. General, so general service establishment and contractors' yard are kind of tied together, so separately defining contractors' yards may get clear and different from general service establishment. Restaurant is simply a change in the use table. Right now, a restaurant is not allowed in the industrial highway district, it's not allowed use, which we thought didn't necessarily make sense, given industrial highway is primarily along Route one-ten and Powers Road, especially if we are going to see some redevelopment per the MBTA community's bylaw, we could have some more people in the area, and it would make more sense perhaps to allow for a restaurant there. And then massage establishment, right now, it's not allowed in any district, but we do have several of them in town, so we're looking to potentially allow that in the commercial highway, industrial highway, industrial A, so I guess primarily along Willington Road and Route forty. So we define and have use regulations for that, we could go over those in more detail if you'd like. Parking, I guess I'll just kind of run through the zoning bylaw ones, see if we're going to create some of these use, these uses that we don't have defined now, we need to create a parking requirement for it, so that's why you see it just kind of listed as several uses, it's all tied to the same uses there. The one small change, I guess, being we did look at reducing the requirement for a business professional office. As part of the hearing with the planning board, they asked us to look at medical offices differently from other types of things that might fall under business professional office, so say attorney office or real estate office. So we'll define the medical office and keep that as its current parking requirement, just kind of looking at usage here in town, while these, these other ones, where you don't have as many people coming in as frequently, looking at a little bit of relief on the parking requirement there, so going from one to two hundred square feet to one per four hundred square feet, so a fairly modest change. But even with several uses that would be considered business professional office, particularly along the one-ten Powers Road area, just that simple change from one to two hundred to one to four hundred, you could free up in the, again, in the handful that we looked at, seven and a half acres worth of land, which is impervious area that's not getting used, which helps for sustainability goals, but also just opens up area for additional development that could ultimately help economic development and help the tax base here in town. So that's where that, that changes. And then temporary trailers, that's kind of a silly one, but as part of our MBTA community's bylaw review, in this go-around, the attorney general's office, they looked at our whole bylaw to make sure there are no conflicts with our MBTA community's bylaw that was passed the town meeting. While they didn't find any conflicts, they did find one provision in our bylaw that needed some updating based on state law. So in the case of a temporary trailer, where you have, you know, someone who may have had a fire or some other catastrophe happen in their home, and they need to live out of a temporary trailer while their house is getting reconstructed, I, but our bylaw says you're allowed to have that situation for six months, but state law says you're supposed to allow that for twelve months, so we're really just changing a six to a twelve. That's all we're doing on that one. But we have to go to town meeting to do that. So that was it. So those are the four zoning bylaw amendments. Again, we can pull up anything that you may want to look at, if you'd like. I don't know if there'd be any other warrant articles that were of interest, I can try to speak to what I can, but, you know, if there's any questions.
I'm all set.
Yep.
Okay. That was everything?
Yeah, it's everything.
Okay. Nobody has anything else?